Yes. Had to look at my driver's license to make sure it was correct.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Call the meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The number of the September ninth twenty twenty-five meeting minutes.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Legal update.
Good morning everyone. Uh, we have two things updating going on today. Um, I think you're kind of more just, um, letting me get some context. So, um, one of the things was the ways in which the county can use them. The settlement dollars coming from opioid, uh, settlement, uh, settlements. So, um, just as a high level, those, you know, the state evidence, more for settlement negotiations or agreements, you know, from super companies, distributed, related firms, et cetera. Um, and as those funds are distributed, um, the way in which the county can use it is seventy percent of the funds you receive can go to restrict, uh, restricted funds. So those have to go to, um, programs for treatment, prevention, and care, that are the best practices, et cetera. Um, so I have these kind of assistance and good resources. So the first is kind of something that the state has put out that creates guidance for this. Um, and the second is, we'll kind of go into a little bit, is it so easy to the settlement negotiations? Um, and so those restricted funds have to be used in certain ways in the settlement agreement lays that out in Exhibit E. Um, and as we'll kind of just quickly advance out of Exhibit E, it's very, very detailed as to the categories in which those restricted funds could go to and the ways in which it can go under those, under those categories. Um, as you'll see, when we dive into it, those are very broad and well, the county will want discretion to be able to decide the best way. It thinks it uses those funds, it has a full prevention treatment, opioid, um, use or addiction, et cetera. Um, as you'll see too, in the state document, there is a table that is highlighted in blue, um, which lays out the things that they, the county cannot use with those restricted funds. Um, and, um, you'll see kind of adrenal theme of just ensuring those funds aren't going to kind of the prosecution and, um, of, of individuals that use drugs. Um.
Yes.
Can I just provide some background? So we received some information that there may be additional settlement money coming that wasn't part of the original funds we received, I think in twenty twenty-three that I believe has already been allocated. Um, and so this came up because we received notice of that. And, um, there's a question about whether or not this council is willing to create this local advisory committee. And there will be more information coming in November regarding that.
And like that, that document from the state is very helpful, kind of laying out, um, how to go about creating a committee, what their recommendations would be for creating a committee. Um, it's important to know as well that creating a committee and the ways in which you get out are not statutorily based. So that is very much discretionary to the county if they want to create a committee and how they really want to create a committee. Um, but it provides helpful guidance and maybe best practices of doing that. Um, and that committee would then be able to look at Exhibit E and how those funds should be used in between that as a recommendation to the council. Um.
Have you seen any communities outline what they're going to use this for yet?
I mean, I, I'm sure some of those funds have already been distributed. So yes, those funds have already been used for different, um, like prevention and treatment purposes. What those are, I don't know off the top of my head. I'd have to go and kind of.
Most of the counties are using them for the same purpose that they were using the others in Colorado.
The shop is.
And I don't know if the county's getting them.
So Montgomery County, my understanding is they've created this committee and some of the things that have been suggested we could use it for is, you know, we lost the funding that went towards the treatment program inside the jail. So that could be like one option. Um, I'm trying to remember the other ones that I heard that Montgomery County was doing. That was, I think that was the main one. Cause I think a lot of people across the state or a lot of community corrections counties across the state lost that funding for the treatment program that were in the jail.
And the, the Exhibit E, which outlines what you can use it for, is very clear that it doesn't have to be for new programs. You can use it for existing programs or expanding programs that already exist. Uh, it just clarifies that you can't use it for things that already have grants attributed to it. Um, which, you know, at a high level makes sense. Why would you find some of them that already has funding?
Any questions on that?
All right, okay. The next thing, um, is if we lose, um, interest in the Trex debt settlement program.
Can I also give background on that?
Yeah.
Sorry. This was something that, um, Sherry and I asked Jewel about, I think back in June. Um, we learned that Clinton County, I think that they are collecting somewhere between twenty and thirty thousand using this Trex program. And so I had just asked Jewel, once we got through budget to, I'm not familiar with the program, to have him like give us additional information about that, how it works and what it looks like.
Yeah.
I thought we did it.
We did. Nikki does it.
But do we do it countywide? Like, do we use it for like, I don't think we use it for like community corrections or like probation or like any, anything else like that.
I don't think they use it.
Yeah, okay.
But we use it for various reasons.
So the, um, Association of Indiana Counties has a Trex program, um, which partners with Indiana Department of Revenue to collect on unpaid debts. Um, so the Indiana Association of Indiana County has a clearing house in which municipalities such as the county can submit unpaid debts to that clearing house, um, which then partners with the Indiana Department of Revenue. So what they do is kind of when it gets towards the tax season, they will, um, whatever the county, the municipality submits to Trex as these are unpaid debts. The Indiana Department of Revenue will try to match those with individuals based off of name and social security number that will be receiving a tax refund from the state. Um, and, um, if an individual who has an unpaid debt to the county will be receiving a tax refund check, whatever is owed to the county will be taken from that. Um, this is done by Trex, this is done by the Indiana Department of Revenue. That's not administered by the county. The only thing that the county has to do is once they receive notice that someone's, uh, refund will be, you know, kind of garnished in the sense of those, of those debts, they have to send a notice to that individual that, um, I think it's within fifteen days of, um, the county being made aware that the refund is being withheld in some degree. Um, and then that individual is allowed thirty days to kind of object to that and dispute that debt. Um, there's no cost for the county to participate in this. Um, the only thing that they are required to pay for is kind of the notice and the postage for sending it out to those individuals. And then, um, I would imagine kind of any administration for someone to contest that debt. Um.
So Haley, would that be, um, like child support, property tax payments that the county's owed? I mean, things outside our realm would maybe be included there so that.
Yeah, so there's an extensive list here. I did read this.
I'm sorry.
Afterwards, um, it's animal violations, assessments, cemetery demolitions, um, false alarms, fines, library, et cetera. EMS ordinance violations, parking tickets, property tax.
Okay.
Um, I mean, the list is very extensive.
Great.
So I don't, I'm sure there's are things that would fall out of this, but it doesn't look like it would be kind of the approval rather than the exception.
Can you send that to us after the meeting? Maybe just everybody on the council, what that long list is.
Yeah, I have to answer any questions. I know if it will be go, can you tell her just at a high level here?
I think that's good. And then to Debbie's point, we can check in with Nikki and see how far her outreach is. Because something tells me that maybe we don't have all the things on the list that might be able to be included and partnered up with the Indiana DOR.
Cause the way you go about entering into it, it's just an MOU with Trex and association and, um, an application. So if you guys already have that on file, um, I would, I don't know if MOU is specific to certain debt you've agreed to send or if it's very generalized MOU where you could easily just expand that by choosing to send it to them.
Right. Thanks.
Thank you. New business ordinance twenty twenty-five dash O three issuance of negotiable notes. Um, and ordinance twenty twenty-five dash O four dash appropriation ordinance. Good morning.
Good morning, Council. Um, our name's Dennis Sutton. I'm with Bose McKinnon Evans. We're working with the county on this financing. Appreciate the opportunity to do so. I was here before the commissioners at their meeting on Monday. They adopted a resolution approving these notes. And, and what we've got going on here are the issuance of three series of notes, each one not to exceed two million dollars to fund three separate road and bridge improvement projects. Uh, and I see Nick back there in that, and we've been working together to come up with the project descriptions for these. This is similar to what the county did back in twenty twenty to fund improvements. Um, this will generate a tax levy. It will go for at least no stamping them off. You might ask, why are we issuing three notes by statute for this type of issue? It's limited to two years or two million for a ten-year term. So that's why we set it up this way. And so we have a couple items for you. The first is the note ordinance itself, um, which authorizes the issuance of the notes for a term not to exceed ten years, um, with a maximum interest rate of six percent. And we're working with Ryan Holton at Baker Tilly on this, is your financial advisor to get the parameters and everything. So, and now they'll be tax exempt. And then the other companion ordinance is the appropriation ordinance that appropriates the proceeds of the notes. Now, from a timing standpoint, and it's totally up to you, um, we are hopeful that you would consider adoption of the note ordinance today. Because that will allow us to publish a notice that triggers a thirty-day period and we can get through that. And will allow us to go into the market sooner rather than later. And at this time of year, it's, it's better if you can get to the market earlier before we start getting into the holidays. But, uh, as I say that, if you say, well, we just want to introduce the new ordinance today and hold it up for your next meeting, we can live with that. It'll just push us a little bit farther into the holiday season for the sale of the notes. But I'm going to pause there and see if you all have any questions.
Are there any questions? No.
You said it's real similar to what we did in twenty.
Yes.
Okay.
Very much the same.
And it's my understanding, Haley, that we can waive the initial reading and move forward.
Yeah, so you got to have a hand with both suspend the rules and then vote out the two hearings to prove it. So they just have to.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Is there a motion?
I do want to say one thing. I just, so there's no, the appropriation ordinance will just introduced. We'll have a public hearing on that one at your next council meeting.
I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five O three, the issuance of negotiable notes.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And then we also need to approve, uh, the ordinance twenty twenty, sorry, that was twenty twenty-five O three, correct?
I don't have the agenda for that.
Okay, yes.
The big one is the, the note, note resolution.
Okay. And then we still have the appropriation ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash O four. And this is the one that we'll have the public hearing on next month, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do we need a motion on this one today?
Just to introduce it.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I make a motion, uh, motion, uh, pass ordinance number two zero two five dash zero four.
I think we should just clarify while we're just introducing it.
Yeah.
So if it doesn't have to be a vote, you can, this is just being introduced, it's just to add to the record and.
So we don't need a motion on that?
I'll withdraw the motion. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Is there anything further then? Nope. All right. Thank you so much. Um, Ed.
First, thank you very much for allowing me a few minutes to go ahead and speak. I know that you folks are in the middle of finalizing budget as the library will be this evening. And speaking to which, um, as part of approving our budget this evening, we're engaging in a variety of expense reduction efforts. Uh, we're looking at, um, making some worst-case scenario assumptions and proceeding with going ahead and reducing expenses accordingly where possible. As far as staff is concerned, we're looking at, um, reducing headcount via attrition for the time being. While we're actively preparing for worst-case scenarios, we're hoping that tax revenues will be a little bit more favorable than some of the more dire predictions that have been floated here and there. Now, I especially have some questions regarding what the impact of the property tax changes will have as far as our area is concerned. On a more personal note, I'd like to thank you folks for appointing me so many years ago. Uh, I'm completing my twelfth year on the library board. My third term, of course, will expire at the end of this year. Normally, I would be open for going ahead and accepting one more term. But the old saying of life being what happens while you're making plans is key here. I've been a caregiver for five years, seven days a week. That person's health is deteriorating and I have additional family members that I'm going to have to be attending to as well. With, uh, that in mind, I wanted to let you folks know well in advance of the expiration of my term that I will not be requesting a reappointment. Under better circumstances, I would be happy to serve one last term. But, you know, in this situation, we have other obligations. Now, I will say that obviously I'm going to be serving out the remainder of my term. And if it takes a little while to find a suitable replacement, I'm certainly going to go ahead and stay on until such time as we get a replacement. I'd like to think that in terms of what you folks have gotten for appointing me, that there have been a few things that have been accomplished. Whether it's improvements in internal control, but keeping infrastructure maintenance reports established, uh, getting better insurance coverage because heavens, our insurance agent certainly was unfamiliar with the coverage. And one thing that was enjoyable was getting a chance to go and correct the state board of accounts on some of the mistakes they made in our body. Yes, that I really look forward to. I know I haven't always been popular with library staff, but my take has always been that my real constituency are the residents in our service district. Now, as a parting thought, I really would like to suggest that, you know, the best candidate as a replacement is going to have to have solid accounting experience. They need to be familiar with insurance, building systems, and IT. Uh, the treasurer's position is actually mentioned in Indiana statute. So if you're going ahead and submitting reports annually and I have to sign off on those, it is my name that is on record as having gone ahead and approved those for submission through the gateway. So there are obviously, there's certain reporting responsibilities and obligations that go along with the position. So please keep all of that in mind as you review candidates. Uh, I've submitted a resume for a potential candidate to Kevin and he can wind up getting that distributed accordingly. So to sum up, thank you once again for the opportunity to help. And I'd like to think that I made a, a few improvements and a few contributions. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Facilities. Did they submit this? Lori, we have a, um, reappropriation request from facilities. Did you submit this? You'll have to unmute yourself.
I submitted what I thought we were doing a courtesy reapproach. Yes, I did, but I thought it was courtesy.
And this is just to move money from capital projects to the courthouse windows line? Are there any questions?
Yeah, I did. What is this for? I, I thought there was a, I thought there was a discussion about courtesy reapproaches. There, there was no such thing as courtesy reapproaches. Yeah, what, so what is it? What is this for? The court, cause I thought the courthouse windows were done. Go ahead. I'm sorry. I can, I'm sorry. I was speaking. I thought the courthouse windows were done. Sorry. I'll just get here.
One second, Lori. Okay.
Is that better, Aaron?
Yes, thank you. What is the, I thought the courthouse window project was done.
This is, um, according to Etika, this is their final invoice for the window project, project, yes.
For the eighteenth, is it just, is it like a missing invoice or something? Or what is it for?
No, it's their final invoice.
Okay. Debbie, have you seen it? This is the last invoice.
I don't have to see this one, but yeah.
You don't know if it's the last?
They're not done. I don't know. I still have a boarded up window, so I know they're not done.
Hey, hey Commissioner Payton, how are you? Come on. Do you know when the window project will be done?
I do not. I don't have a date.
How much money's left for the window project? None?
None. That's why they're having to move this stuff.
So this is an additional. I thought it said, yeah.
I, my understanding is it's not an additional, Lori, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't the window project forty-four thousand under budget?
Yes.
Okay. But we just didn't put enough in the line?
Correct.
They knew at the beginning of the year that we'd have to do an additional. This is not an additional. This is moving from one line to the next.
Okay, so, huh, hold on. I'm, she's saying great things. I'm not there. Is it an additional or not an additional?
It is not an additional.
Is it forty-four thousand dollars under budget?
I have no idea.
Lori just said it was.
Lori, is it forty-four thousand dollars under budget?
If not, maybe expenses out of the window line, so I don't know.
So it's potentially forty, is there anywhere we can get an accounting of it? It's, I don't know from you all. And you don't know when it'll be done, Commissioner Payton?
I do know, sure.
Is there anywhere we can get a timeline? Cause if it's.
Okay.
I can ask Max.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, John.
My only question is if this is the final invoice and if the job's not done, we don't pay the final invoice.
Okay, I was literally going to.
Till the job's done.
Well, there's three different invoices. I, I don't know what Etika was just doing. Because the windows themselves, the company that put those in, we paid them. We've paid Etika and we've paid somebody else. There's like three sets of invoices.
But the job's not finished yet.
I know my office is not done.
Then I don't think we pay the bill.
My HVAC hasn't been hooked back up and I have a boarded up.
Go ahead, John, what'd you say? I'm sorry.
I don't think we pay the final bill until the job's done.
Hey, that's.
If it's the final invoice.
I wanted, yeah, so I was trying to get from you.
I can ask Max. He's, he's out this week.
Okay.
But yeah, I can ask him and get back with you.
And figure it out.
That'd be great. Thank you.
And let's not get into the habit of cutting people off when they have questions and saying, thanks, Dan. I, I want to make sure we respect each other.
That would be great.
And I was just giving you, I was just giving comments. I wasn't cutting you off at all. I never tried to.
Okay, I felt that way. It was like, thanks, Dan.
I'm sorry you felt that way.
All right.
Um, so should we table this facilities reapproach until our next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's good.
All right.
All right.
We'll table that. Additional request, area plan consultant line.
Would that be like your own permission?
No. They did not provide a name of the speaker, so they didn't, I don't know. The additional for area plan.
I would, I imagine that is to continue paying Deb because we're over budget on that as of now.
Cause we didn't have a person, uh, I know they put that after job description, but still, it's a pair until you guys end up.
Till we hire a, till we hire. I know it's, I know the job is posted. Um, I know there has been some applicants. Um, so progress is being made on that end of it.
Oh, really?
Uh, so that's a good thing. Um, but as far as the consulting line to pay Deb until we get someone and do that transition, there's not.
What do you think about, um, to Debbie's point? Do you think that's enough to get through the year until, I mean, I don't know what you guys are at on applicants. How much you think you'll need until there's, there's progress made from?
So we're October, November, December.
I don't know, cause I think you're better about ten, what do you, how many?
It's about ten, five, be eleven, somewhere in there. Yeah, I mean, it's.
Twenty-two thousand today.
It's about ten thousand a month roughly.
Ten five.
Yeah, it runs a little, yeah, between ten and eleven.
Yeah.
Hold on.
So thirty-three should get to.
So thirty-three should get to the end of the month.
Or end of the year.
Yeah.
Was that every month?
It's a good month. Do what I can. Um, that should get, if not awful, awful close.
What do you, just out of curiosity, what do you think you guys are, you know, you guys have somebody hired by the end of the year?
Well, the goal is, so, um, the dollar figure that's advertised now is the last dollar figure that was approved through the council as far as pay structure on it. And from my understanding, we can't advertise the new dollar figure until the budget is passed and adopted. Um, so we're getting some applicants, some better than previous advertisements. So that's a plus. Um, but there's still, I would like to, to be able to advertise a tad of the dollar figure to get
Yeah.
what we need.
To attract the candidates.
Right.
So we, we approved the thirty-three thousand. That should give us three thousand to pay the three thousand.
It should give us another three months.
No, it's a, uh, an additional, so we have to do a public hearing.
I'm sorry.
We have to do a public hearing first. Is there any further discussion with the, for the council? At this time, we'll open this additional for a public hearing. If you'd like to be heard on this additional, please approach the podium, set your name, address, and business in the county, and you'll have two minutes to speak with a thirty-second warning. It's on, are you, want to speak on the additional request?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. With their big no, public comment, uh, we'll close the public hearing. Um, is there a motion?
I move that we approve an additional thirty-three thousand dollars for area plan consulting line.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. Old business, um, highway. Amend the vote for reappropriation.
So we voted on a reappropriation of the last meetings. My understanding, um, the real sure wins on the agenda again. So I'm open to discussing that reappropriation that we previously moved some funds around to road restoration and, uh, stone ground. I'm not sure what's on the agenda.
You need to vote this here. Debbie, can you?
Oh, cause the numbers were wrong. I was trying to think.
Oh.
Yes, they submitted them with the wrong numbers.
The line number or the budget number or the dollar round?
The line numbers. So you guys approved?
Let me handle that.
There was just a couple digits wrong. Yeah, there were just a couple of the line numbers. You just need to, to ratify it.
So I just need to exhibit fund numbers?
Line numbers.
I'm sorry, line numbers. So the, the amounts are the one thirty-seven, five hundred.
The amounts are correct. It was just the line numbers that were incorrect.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, is there any further discussion? Is there a motion?
I move that we reproach, uh, fund, do you do the whole fund number, just the last one, the last, the Indian?
The first and last.
One, one, seven, three.
Fund one, one, seven, three, fund Indian seven, zero, two, zero for stone and gravel, and transfer to, fund Indian seven, zero, five, four, and fund one, one, seven, three, Indian, zero, zero, six, nine, two, one, seven, zero, five, four, for the first amount of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred, and the second amount, one hundred seventy-six thousand and ninety-six dollars.
Is there a second?
Is it seventy-eight or seventy-six? Mine looks like an eight.
Seventy-six.
Is it a six?
Yeah. There's been a, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Amended resolution for the investment and depository policy.
Good morning, council. I'm coming in, attorney. The treasurer has asked a pinchment for her on this, the initial investment policy that you approved at the beginning of this year. She is asking paragraph three to be amended to add an additional bank. She would like to include First Farmers Bank and Trust and BMO Bank. I asked her, I need to get bids on interest rates for two CDs that are maturing. I'm going to give them an opportunity to bid. If they would be successful, they need some paperwork to demonstrate, which would be the purpose of this resolution. She said this will allow the county to be further diversified by spreading the investments to other financial institutions across the county. First Farmer Bank and Trust has been on the Indiana Board of Depositories list since July one of twenty twenty.
So is it a request for us to let you go get on this today?
It's to amend the investment policy, because we have to identify the financial institutions, and this lets her go bid. She actually contacted them, and has a seven-day window that I believe expires next Tuesday, and thought the interest rate was attractive enough, I don't want to speak to it, that she really wanted to get this accomplished.
Any further questions? Any discussion?
But they have to be in the county bank? They have to have a branch or something in the county?
They do, yes. She told me where, and I don't remember.
Out by the thirty-two and sixty-five.
BMO though.
The First Farmers, First Farmers Bank and Trust.
Didn't you say BMO though?
Yeah, BMO is one.
BMOs are U of R, the party provider.
And so she just, just to be clear, she thought it would just be the most, she thought it would be appropriate to include it in the resolution, because we already utilized them for something, but it's.
I move that we amend ordinance twenty twenty-five oh two for the.
It's oh one. Twenty twenty-five oh one.
Twenty twenty-five oh one for the investment and depository policy.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh two, reporters' perpetuation fund. We were presented with this last month and also during our budget workshops. This version also has the reporter's sworn statement attached, so I believe we just need a motion. Um, no, we, it was explained during a budget workshop, and then Jewel presented it to us for first reading last month, I believe.
I move that we approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh two for the reporters' perpetuation fund, this year twenty twenty-six.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. This is just a reminder that due to Veterans Day, our next meeting would have normally been on November eleventh, but it'll be on Wednesday, November twelfth, at eight-thirty a.m. I will open, at this time, we'll open the meeting up for public comment. Again, the same rules apply. Please approach the podium, you'll have two minutes to speak, I will keep track of those two minutes. I will lift this green book. When there's thirty seconds remaining, you need to state your name, your address, and your business in the county. Is there any public comment? Yes.
My name's, I'm wondering step. My address is five twenty-seven five state road forty-seven. I am a marine and a retired state sheriff, and currently a pre-trial director for community corrections. I was informed of an allegation against Indiana law on September twenty-six for playing misconduct. This was through a phone call from our supervisor, the director of the community corrections, and during that phone call, I explained my actions, and we also, during that phone call, asked for my resignation on two occasions. As soon as I was aware of this, I contacted that equivalent, Amber Cho, and asked her a meeting. I was provided that meeting following Monday, and she asked if it was older, and I indicated that, I indicated that I felt this to be retaliatory, because I had filed a thing against the director, and attempted to revoke a support protection. She did advise me that she would be investigating my actions, but at no time did she provide me with the John warnings that would be required. There was a nineteen eighty-one U.S. Supreme Court case that states that an attorney that works for the same entity as the employee who advised they're investigating them must advise them of this.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Does anyone online wish to be heard during public comment? Council comment? Is there a motion?
I move that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Stay here a little longer.
We'll take a five-minute break and then, uh, open up our budget workshop.